Oh, we are in time. I'm calling the meeting to order on time. I want that noted. Okay. If we can stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have nothing to report in closed session at the moment. So, adoption and approval of the agenda.
I would like to move to amend the placement of the agenda. Action item 10.1.1, the resolution 1920-1, opposing eight crimes and white supremacy, to the beginning of the agenda after the presentations.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
You move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, what we will do is we will...
Can I move to approve moving the Mentor Me presentation before that?
Yeah.
Sorry, adding it. Oh, yeah, I have to move added.
To, and that was 6.2.
Yeah, so I forget when I'm gonna do that.
And then, we will do...
And then we do the resolution.
Yes.
Yeah, so Mentor Me, then the resolution, then the rest of that. That's what I moved.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now, with that in mind, adoption, approval of the agenda with the changes?
I move to approve the agenda with the changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so then we move right on to facilities update.
I'm happy to report I don't have a lengthy PowerPoint presentation. So I'm gonna just quickly go through some of the things that we've completed over the past few months. It's been a very busy summer. This year, we had a team clean on our elementary campuses, which meant generally, we took all of our custodians, separated them into two teams, and then went from school to school doing a lot of in-depth cleaning as soon as our year-round school started. Then, we moved one team back to Pengrove and Cherry Valley, and then we supported the other team after that. So I think it was highly successful. We had some lessons learned, for sure. So it was the first time of really doing this. We learned that we need to make accommodations for teacher box moves. And so, when teachers are moving classroom to classroom, if there's not a custodian there, how do we accommodate that? So, we definitely had some lessons learned, but I think generally, it was very successful. So I'm gonna quickly just be off some stuff. If I'm going too fast, just let me know, because we can talk slower after. So, Pendlewood High School, we did new fencing at the tennis courts, and that's in collaboration with our neighbors. They're thrilled. The tennis court fencing, the fabric was very old, and I won't go into all detail, but let's just say, it looks fantastic, and the neighbors are very excited. As our... We replaced eight HVAC units, that's mechanically, that's heating, ventilation, air conditioning at Pendlewood High School, museum, counseling, one or two at the office, and then one in the classroom. Those were our oldest units, and that was paid for by Prop 39. We got new picnic tables. We're trying to slowly but surely replace them. Have you seen some of our picnic tables? They're embarrassing at best, unsafe at times, and so, we're slowly but surely replacing them as we can.
Chris, where do we get the picnic tables from?
It's a company called Viewline. I just found out, we actually can get custom weather purple. At Pendlewood High School, I did gray, and we tried one burgundy, just to see. And FYI, we're also doing ADA accessible tables, so we're making sure we actually have one ADA accessible picnic table. So if we have students who need that, they have access to sit in with their peers. And we didn't have that in our district before. Gym floors have been done like we do every... And then, we're still in the design process for exterior paint. We're looking at going out to bed the next few weeks, and then, doing the main bank of buildings, the very front campus with the three main wings, the admin building, counseling, just doing exterior paint. We've worked with Arnie principal and site teachers, and we think that that's doable. If we phase it and try to minimize the impact on our staff. Casa Grande, re-grouping and building repairs at Building E, or the south part of Building E. If any of you were, have been at Casa Grande, you're at Casa Grande, and you know Building E, like a sieve. Last year, we did the main part of it, but the southern part, we finished this year. New flooring in the weight room, it looks fantastic. We did new flooring at Peleman High School a year or so ago, so then we did Casa Grande. Well, we went in there to do paint, we also updated it with new flooring, we updated it with new paint, replaced the funky old sink, like a trough sink, with new stainless steel sinks, and a hydration station for our students.
Oh, yay.
Positive. We did new hydration system in the library, too. So, Ole Garden, again, the Ole Garden is a work in progress. The parents and the community have done a lot of work on it, but the gravel for the pathways is not ADA accessible. It's not an acceptable ADA accessible material. So we've replaced it with concrete, the first phase, and we did a ground golden concrete, so it looks more like decomposed granite, so it looks more natural, doesn't look like great concrete. Installation of new carpet in three or four different classrooms. We did exterior paint for the restrooms in the R Wing, exterior paint of several doors. We went around and identified some of the really bad, big doors, and our staff were able to paint those. New picnic tables at Casa, as well, with an ADA accessible one. Removal of the old plywood on the tennis courts. For some reason, there was weird old plywood at the back of the tennis courts, and there didn't seem to be any purpose for it. I think that there used to be something.
I think it was a wind block.
Maybe...
It used to be a wind block.
There was something behind that, because there's actually AC, there's asphalt behind it, so I don't know.
Could've been an ant ball?
It was rotting.
It was bad.
Right, we don't need to put it back.
And we also installed new vape detection devices at all of our restrooms. We have not activated them yet, because we want to go through a process by which we determine, okay, now that we have them, what do we do? They're very sensitive, so...
So if someone lights up in the bathroom, what happens?
Yes, we will detect it, but what happens if every bathroom is lit up at the same time? You know what I mean? We're just kind of, we learned something, because we activated them over the summer, and what we found is that if our maintenance guys were working in the bathroom, the vape detection devices would go off. If, you know, so...
They're very sensitive.
Yeah, so we're working kind of through, do we activate them quadrant by quadrant? What's the school's response? You know, so we want to work through those details before we activate them fully. Kettleworth, we did some exterior siding repairs and paint. I don't know if you're familiar with the back portables, which big wooden deck. All of those portables, we did a bunch of siding repair, especially on the field side, where irrigation was penetrating the exterior, there's a lot of drywall, and we had them all painted. We now need to come up with a plan for the deck, because it's been brought to my attention that that depth is really bad, so we've got to figure that out.
Is the irrigation changed, so it won't do that anymore?
Yes, absolutely. That doesn't mean all the state change, because nature irrigation is it, if people step on it, people, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, but we're gonna be monitoring continuously. Again, if I'm going too fast, let me know.
Perfect.
Updated irrigation, we converted fully to replant water at Kettleworth, so we're hoping to see some savings in our water source at Kettleworth. We're excited about that.
Can we do that at all the schools?
No, I wish we could. So, that's a huge infrastructure thing for the city and for the water district, sewer district, so...
Okay, so it's such a new campus.
They actually ran the infrastructure that we were able to tie into.
Oh, okay.
I wish we could upgrade, because we would if we could. Usually, that's over many, many years' kind of process. We also are in the process of cleaning and having the company work on the solar systems at Kettleworth, evaluating those. And then, we have ongoing design work on the HVAC units, in particular for the multi and some of the adjacent classrooms. Pendlewood Junior High slash central kitchen, because remember, our central kitchen is housed there. Purchased installation of two new walk-in refrigerator and freezer, repaired existing freezer. Some of that, we use Prop 39 money to support. New concrete in the walk-in area to support it. New roofing and HVAC units at the top of the multi central kitchen. The roofing was just completely in bad repair, and the six units also were in need of replacement. We refinished the floor. If you've noticed, if you've driven by Pendlewood Junior High, we're restoring a third of the outdoor garden, the big center area, to grass, and the reason we're doing that is because we cannot prevent crabgrass from growing in that area. So that north side of the circle is all crabgrass. There's just no way to kill crabgrass without using some very toxic chemicals, which we don't want to do. We also think this gives the school site a more manageable area to manage their outdoor science labs, which we have assisted with. So, we think this is a win-win. It's gonna look nicer, it's gonna be easier for us to maintain, and will actually give the school site more opportunities to maintain the sections that they're responsible for. We also repaired the mudslide area, so I don't know, I mean, we didn't repair it, but we worked with owner, there was a mudslide on the back hillside above the Luluit Fields, and so, we worked with them to repair that. And we also painted an interior accent wall in the library, so there's a main wall on the west side of the library inside, and we worked with the librarian to come up with the color scheme and paint that. We did some roofing replacement at the teen center building at San Antonio. Installation, as moving to Grant, installation of new ballards of the staff parking area, that's to keep students out after hours. Yeah, the neighbors have been very frustrated. That school site kind of becomes a party zone, and we find beer cans on our roofs, we find other things around the campus, clean it or not. So, these are kind of state-of-the-art ballers that they drop down, and then you pull it back up, and will tell you that whoever is going there damaged the ballers within the first week, but we've had them repaired.
Do they need a key or something?
There's a key that you then...
So then, all the staff members have a key, so then...
The custodian will open them in the morning, and then close them at night before he leaves. It's only to intend to keep you at night.
It's only, okay, that's what I was trying to see.
And we are having, I wonder... Well, then you need motion sensor lighting, and you need other things to try to keep them, but, so we'll see how effective that is. A new ADA accessible pathway to the YMCA, it was very old and just repaired AC pathway or asphalt pathway. We installed a whole bunch of new windows to replace plexiglass in numerous classrooms on the campus. The plexiglass was in really bad condition, scratched, etched, and everything else. So, every teacher I went into at the first day at school was very excited about that. New carpet in their maker space, and we installed the first phase of new fencing around the Kinder area, had really ugly old slats, so on the office side, we did that with the fence, and then we'll continue around as we have to. Okay, McKinley, installation of the new entry weight canopy. Have you seen that?
I've seen it earlier. That's really nice.
Very nice. Yeah, some punchless work, but it's just about done. New picnic tables, as well. They're growing, so there's a fully replacement, it's about addressing their growth. Interior paint in various classrooms. We've actually added two new portables, they're not ready yet, we still have a lot of work to do, but we got them in before school started, because they had to go across the block. New furniture for the new classrooms, and I said new picnic tables. McNear, we also did replacement picnic tables. If you're familiar with McNear, they had the funky old blue tables kind of between the buildings. Those were all fiberglass, and the fiberglass was starting to delaminate, for lack of a better word. So we got rid of all those, replaced them with the yellow ones that were by the multi, and put new green ones in the multi. So, the reason we did that is the flat surface is more for art projects, and then the mesh that we buy is more for lunch. We also ran electrical, they, their PTA or a parent group paid for a new PE container to hold all their PE equipment, so we ran electrical to that, so they could put lights inside. New carpet in one of the classrooms, it's in process, and we're looking at roofing repairs for the admin building, that's in the process. Valley Vista, we did some gutter repairs, or we're in the process of doing gutter repairs. Pengrove, we did a lot, basic renovations, a new ADA accessible ramp. If you have a chance to go see the basement, it's actually a pretty cool space, but we made it ADA accessible, the YMCA has moved in, student restrooms are in design down there, and the HVAC system is also in design. We also converted the former computer lab into a classroom by taking out a wall, expanding it a little bit into the library building, new wall, new carpet, and paint, new cabinets, and that's actually a great classroom, it's got great light, great windows. We re-roofed two buildings, did some stucco repair, new student restroom repairs in progress, or student restroom repairs in progress. We added new toilet partitions in one of the restrooms, and some interior paint. I'm almost done.
We are busy.
Removal of existing lattice work on the portables at Mary Collins, so the portables, like four of the five had this old wooden lattice work, which blocked all the light. If you only have two windows...
You need light.
The reason it was there is because of the ball concern, but we think that that's gonna be minimal, and we'll track it and see. And then, we've done some field maintenance, so Siri knows, because that field was near dear to our hearts. And then, just generally, that's an addition, those are kind of the highlights. I'm sure there's stuff that we missed, but you know, we did pick-up delivery of all the Chromebooks and cards, so our IT department does an amazing job deploying all the one devices and everything. Maintenance, on the other hand, assists with some of these other things. Multiple classroom moves from school to school, within the school. Pressure washing of all the buildings around, we didn't used to do that before, so we have pressure wash. We actually bought some more commercial-grade pressure washers and some hot water, which actually gets the gum...
Oh.
Electrical light repair, ceiling tile replacement, multiple plumbing projects, painting projects, locksmithing, HVAC filters. We're in the process of finishing moving, putting all new filters in at the beginning of the school year, so if there is an issue, we have new filters that will help protect our classrooms. Irrigation repairs and deep cleaning of our schools. Other than that...
How big is that?
It's not that big. You know, our guys and Dallas, they do an exemplary job. I mean, maintenance grounds and our custodial staff work very hard all summer long, and this, for me, is a way to acknowledge that work. The first list is mostly, you know, doing bond work and other things, but they really work very hard. They're kind of exhausted, I would say. A lot of them have worked extra hours on weekends, overtime, to make our schools look amazing for our kids. That's our goal, and so, there's always improvement, so we're always learning lessons every single year about how we can do things better, but I just want to give a shout out to how hard they work. And also, just know, we negotiated last year that everybody's gonna start wearing shirts, PCS shirts, and so, we're rolling those out. We've chosen shirts, and they're in the process of ordering, so dark blue for maintenance, kind of a forest green for grounds, and then a light blue for custodian staff. So they'll have their name, and then Pendlewood says schools on it, so that you'll be able to identify a custodian on campus versus someone else. We think from a safety perspective, that's just really beautiful.
Chris, back on McKinley, by the way, thank you, fit long list of improvements in the ground. Back on McKinley, I heard from some parents that movement of, moving those portables in did some damage to a garden, I think, that they constructed.
I think that was last year.
Was that?
That was last year.
Was it?
The garden has been fully relocated. So last year, the first two portables, we moved out and then moved to in. They, that was where their garden was. So now, what we did was we worked with the parents to address that concern by helping them create their kind of premier garden, showcase garden, at the very front, near the multi. So if you go there, there's still green fence around it, because the parents want to add fencing to kind of keep kids and folks from just running through it, but that was a last year issue. This year, I think we're really proud of the garden, that we've been able to partner with them to put it up. So we did the hardscape, and then they've come in and did blockwork and stuff.
How do you create that list? Does every, so, this is very funny, isn't it? So does every site just kind of go, this is what we need? You have an assessment?
Some of these things we didn't find out about until the end of July. We're kind of racing to address issues as they come up. A lot of it's work order. We start planning for summer of 2020 right now.
Okay.
So we, you know, we, as issues come up, we get blue sheets, but we get work orders, things come to our attention, and we start planning the renovations around what we hear from the school sets generally.
Fabulous.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to 6.2, Mentor Me.
I didn't know where to load up my PowerPoint, so I brought some handouts, and I don't know if I have them all.
Yeah, it'd be much more people sitting here besides board.
I will share my contact info at the end as well, so if anybody in the audience would like this PowerPoint, I can get it to them as well. As I was developing this PowerPoint, it was, I was thinking about Mentor Me and my role with Mentor Me. I'm the third executive director since 2000 with Mentor Me. My predecessors are very well-known throughout the community. Myself, not so much. I've been here, and then I've been out, and then I've been back. So what I thought about, actually, what story came to mind, was I was thinking of my son, and I remember driving my son to kindergarten, and he was very much at one point into Pokemon, little cards, and he battled friends and whatnot. And as we're driving, we all know it's a great opportunity to talk to your children, you've got a captured audience, there's no direct eye contact, all those sorts of things. So I asked him how things were going with his Pokemon collection, and from the back, I could just almost feel this judgment of, "Ugh, it's Yu-Gi-Oh! now, Dad." So things had moved on. And where that ties into this presentation is, that's where I come in. Things are moving on with Mentor Me. We've established ourselves as mentors. We started out at McNear campus, at McNear Elementary. Wonderful things done. We've moved on to obtaining the Kavanaugh Center and everything that's available there. Established ourselves in the community. And so, I'm hoping that I won't have to go too much into the history here, and we're well-known enough to not discuss that, but to move on as to what we do now, and where are we moving? And I'm pretty sure that's what we wanted to hear tonight. So, the first thing is our mission, and it's to empower youth in need... I can't read my glasses here. Through, oh, in need, to achieve their highest potential through mentoring and advocacy. So most of you know, too, that we've moved into these two realms of maintaining our mentoring component and advocacy, working with teenagers primarily who have had run-ins and gotten into trouble at school with law enforcement here in the community, and some with probation at Sonoma County Probation Department. What we've done there is, we've helped these youth to do community service, establish a relationship or a deeper relationship with their parents, with their community. And what we want to do now is move on to greater, deeper teaching. So I'm gonna move to page two, under advocacy. Start from there and move forward. Youth ages 12 to 18 years of age. We offer the basics that I mentioned, community service, but one of the things that we want to move towards and grow towards are some of the things that came up today. When we were talking about vaping, the vape monitors in the schools. We've developed a vaping class specifically for youth to come and experience through two years, or two hours. What is vaping doing to them physiologically, emotionally? What is the purpose of it? What is it fulfilling? And we've had a number of youth go through the program, and surprisingly enough, in my 25 years of working with youth, there's a lot of participation, engagement in this particular class, which is a smaller portion of our drug and alcohol class. With the legalization of marijuana, it's important that our youth know what laws are coming around. What does an employer have to hire you because you have a card? A lot of them have a lot of myths that they carry around with them, and we want to dispel those myths for their benefit, because they are a part of our community, and we want to keep them in the community. Restorative practices, so most of us are familiar with restorative justice and restorative practices, but integrating restorative practices into all that we do, so that the youth are comfortable talking to our positive role models about what's going on, how they're feeling, that they're not getting along with Dad or Mom, or even the dog, whatever's going on, they're not, they need somebody to talk to. I used to do anger management in the juvenile hall here in Sonoma County and in Marin County, and one of the biggest things I would tell the youth is that they need a confidant. Everybody needs a confidant, somebody they can talk to and really just open up to, and some judgment may come through with that, but you know that that judgment is filtered through their best interest, and that's what we're trying to do as we grow our program. So advocacy is growing. We're looking at a wilderness component. Again, what else is available to these youth? I mentioned my son, who graduated in 2016 from Pendlewood High, and still enjoys doing this in his room a lot. He'll close his door, and he's a, he enjoys his video games. What else is out there? What does Sonoma County, let alone Pendlewood, have to offer these youth? That's beautiful and enriching, that offers growth, that's gonna incite them or stimulate them to want to take care of the community that they live in. The three core values that we've held on to since the beginning, that I hold on to as well, are connection, connection to home, education and community, growth, positive growth with role models, positive role models helping out, and contribution, giving back to the community as they grow, and they feel confident and competent navigating their I don't know if anybody here knows, I used to run a program called Project Up Here in Pendlewood, back in 2005 and before. And so, now, many of the youth, in particular from 2004, 2005, they're in their 30s, and I run into them downtown, and they want to give back, they want to be mentors themselves, but they're also carrying one infant with one toddler in tow. So there's gonna have to be a little bit of a waiting period. But, this has been one of the biggest tenets that I've held for myself personally, and that I want to bring and really emphasize at Mentor Me, is that we are investing in our youth to contribute and give back later. So as programs develop, as we move from Pokemon to Yu-Gi-Oh!, I want them to be exactly what the youth need and what the youth want. By the way, my son, at 21, you'll find him sometimes at night walking around still looking for Pokemon. It's come full circle. So I don't get it, but... One of the things I think of is the quote by Frederick Douglass, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair a broken man and women." And how do we do that? Through connection. And I'll tell you how many times, through relationship, bonds have been built. That also includes the community, because in my experience, working with gang-affiliated youth and then talking to them, it's easier to damage the community when they have an objective relationship with the community. If I don't feel connected to that school, or if that teacher turns off the minute I leave their class and I can't see them having a life, I could damage that school or that community. If I develop a relationship with that teacher, with that site, some school pride, then it's harder for me to do it. One of the lessons we teach in our Life Sales class is that if an elderly woman were to walk out of Safeway, and she were to reach into her purse for her keys and pull out her keys and drop a $100 bill on the ground, what would you do? And most of the kids say, well, I would go step on it. I wouldn't tell her, I'd let her go to the car. All of it is driven towards them obtaining that $100 bill for themselves. The next question is, what if it's your grandmother leaving your house on Thanksgiving? Oh, well, that's Grandma, I wouldn't, you know, that's her money, I would give it to her. Why? What's the difference? And I ask them. And eventually, what they come to is a subjective relationship versus an objective relationship. They don't know the elderly woman coming out of Safeway. They do know Grandma. And that's what I hope to integrate. And that's what I hope to integrate as we develop new programming in the area of advocacy with youth in the community. That they feel more subjective. They feel a sense of ownership, that we lighten up on, that they lighten up on damaging the community. And the last thing before I turn things over to questions, I didn't know how much time I had. I'd like to point out the picture in the middle of page four of the turtle. This was given to me 25 years ago when I started working at a group home up on Padega Avenue. And the gentleman that gave it to me, I was frustrated with working with kids. Imagine that. I wasn't getting paid what I wanted and I didn't see it coming around. They were mean and I wanted to react in a certain way, but I had to be more mature. I was only three and four years older than some of the elders at this group home. So he gave you this picture and it's on my desk. If you ever come by the office, it's on my desk to this day. And he said, "What would you do if you saw that turtle right there? If you were driving down a country road and you saw that turtle on the fence post, what would you do? What would you think?" "Well, I would take that turtle off that fence post because it's going to fall anyway." And then I would wonder, "How did he get up there?" And those are our kids. The kids that are the toughest, the hardest that I've worked with in the juvenile halls to some of the sweetest kids I've worked with in the juvenile halls as well. They don't get up on that fence post alone. There's something that gets them up there. And Mentor Me, in where we're headed with what we're doing, is moving towards helping them, those youth get off the fence post and to stay off the fence post. So I don't know if I ate up all my time. If there's any questions, I wasn't sure with my time.
I just want to say I inherited an amazing team of amazing staff. And I mean, I can't speak well enough about any of them. So I have a mentee that I've had for a year and a half and the support that all of them have shown her and all the other kids that I've gotten to know is amazing.
Unheard of staff that have worked at a nonprofit for 10 years of work?
No, seriously. I work at a nonprofit. That doesn't happen, Sam.
I have a question about the vape class.
Yes.
It's interesting because that's an issue that, well, most schools are dealing with, especially with, you know, their advertising TV. And I don't know if we would want to do that at the schools, but, and I don't know if we could do a two-hour class, but I'd just like some information on it at some point that should be moving on.
Certainly. So one of the things we do, I don't know if anybody here is familiar with Aikido as a martial art. But in my history of developing work with youth, we don't do this. We don't create an adversarial relationship. We take their energy as it comes towards us and we work with it. So we look through their developmental lenses of being egocentric and let them know why vaping is negative through their eyes, rather than me telling them why it's negative from my 50-year-old eyes.
Right.
Because it's just going to go over their head. So yeah, I would love to talk to you about that. And the philosophy behind it is why they're getting, we're getting so much buy-in, because it comes through that egocentric developmental stage that they're at. The other thing I would say about our drug and alcohol class is we have a four-hour participation with parents on a Saturday. And the parents are showing up. Parents are showing up and doing it. We have some numbers that Deb Dalton, prior to my leaving, sent over to Dave Rose. And I can't remember them off the top of my head right now, but we've never had a family come without their one parent representing them and standing the entire four hours.
I'm really glad this advocacy program has been added. It seems like it's a really powerful, you know, kind of complement to the mentoring and hopefully the mentoring prevents, will put the advocacy out of business.
Well, and the idea behind it is that I really, truly see advocacy as mentoring. So rather than calling both mentoring.
Oh, absolutely. No, it is, definitely.
The advocacy is something that seems stronger and really meets more of that teenage, tweener age mindset better.
You have a lot of community partners, including our school district.
Yes.
How, where do you see Mentor Me's relationship with Petaluma City Schools going forward? What would you like to see?
What I'd like to see is developing a relationship to where we're all in collaboration about what's happening, what is, what is on the forefront, what is Yu-Gi-Oh today? And how can we help or how can we collaborate to help with other nonprofits as well? Because I don't have the answers. Otherwise, I would have a book out and be the only method of doing things. I'm willing to collaborate and see what we can do. What are you guys seeing? What can we work out? We know that gang activity ebbs and flows. Maybe we can do something with that. I've been a partner with Petaluma City Schools since 2000, hopping on at the seven different nonprofits I've worked at throughout the county. I've always had to have a program here in Petaluma because this is where I got my start and where I was given my break. Thank you. And the back has my address and email and blood type. She finds me somewhere.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. So let's move on to our.
The resolution.
The resolution.
So first, please, can we take any public comment on this resolution?
We have one.
If there's any, if there's any specifically about the resolution, about white supremacy and ICE and all of that garbage.
We have one. That would be Sheila Morrison.
Yeah, and then we have a few after.
Nope, we have more.
Yeah. So Sheila can go first.
Thank you. And just very quickly before we start, well, this is on the agenda, so we can, but for the most part during public comment, we listen. I take notes. You can't really comment if it's not on the agenda.
Thank you.
First of all, I don't like to speak in public, so I have felt pushed to do so because of events that are happening. I want to draw the board's attention to the survey, which I brought on Saturday to the community forum, so someone who may have seen it. It was conducted by the Latinx Student Congress in Petaluma in August 2018. I want to go to the highlighted part at the bottom. During a community survey conducted in 2018, 65% of students in Petaluma High Schools expressed that they had been discriminated against because of their racial background. When asked if they experienced discrimination because of their gender expression or sexual orientation, 44% said yes. And I think the most telling one is the one at the bottom, that as a result, 47% of students said that they did not feel safe at school. They conclude, these are their words, "White supremacy affects our communities and it is directly impacting different groups such as students in local high schools. It creates an environment where students of color and LGBTQ plus students do not feel welcomed or safe among their peers. Allowing it to continue means that we are allowing for this toxic culture to continue in our schools." I want to add my own words after listening to theirs. After the latest white supremacist incident this past Saturday, I want to know what would be done to protect and support our marginalized students who are afraid to go to school, who were afraid to go to school this morning and are afraid to go to school tomorrow. We should not be protecting these young men, we should be educating them. Maybe something like Mentor Me could be useful to educate them and help them understand. There needs to be a decisive action in regards to this incident. If we really mean this proposed resolution that is here today against white supremacy, we need to prove it with our actions. Resolutions really mean nothing. Our words will continue to be empty promises.
Thank you. And Justin, Justine?
Justin, don't ask it, it's my parents. I'm just glad I didn't massacre it.
That's okay. Everybody does. Hi, I don't actually want to be here tonight either. I have an eight-year-old at home that I'm supposed to sit down and do a good 30 minutes of reading with tonight, and her father's doing it and that's never a good idea. I'm here because I want to support our children of color and our LGBTQ students, right? My daughter's eight. I'm Caucasian, she's Caucasian. She's fine. But I don't want her to grow up in a town where this injustice happens. You know, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a property owner. My child's part of Petaluma City Schools and I'm asking the board to help and take decisive action because they're all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, we're going to get to you after the resolution.
Right. So I'm not sure how much I can say about what we've been talking about in closed session, but I promise that there are actions coming after these words. I actually drafted these words back in June after the first, I mean, not the first, I'm not going to be one of the people that sits here and tells you there's never been racism in Petaluma City Schools. That's not true. But the first is my tenure. So in fact, this is far, far overdue and is, as Sheila put it, just words. But they are words that will go on our website, they are words that the students and the families that think that these actions are okay are going to have to read every time they see Petaluma City Schools. So I'm going to read it out loud for the record unless anyone has any further comment.
Do you still have motions or time to comment?
Yeah. Whereas Petaluma City Schools is committed to affirming the rights and safety of all students, families and employees. White supremacy is not welcome in our schools. We will work to educate students and our community about the harms of racism, sexism, homophobia and transphobia to the best of our ability and call on families to work at home to impart their values on their children. And whereas Petaluma City Schools can legally refuse to assist immigration and customs enforcement and customs and border protection in locating students, honoring detainer requests or providing certain information to ICE and CBT. To this end, the Board of Trustees affirms the existing protocol, which is to direct any federal agents that may show up on a campus to the district office. Petaluma City School is committed to the privacy and safety of all of our students and families, including our undocumented community members. And whereas Petaluma City School's Family Resource Center located on the campus of McDowell Elementary School has various resources for undocumented and immigrant Petalumans, including consultation on immigration issues. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District opposes hate crimes and white supremacy.
So I move to approve this resolution.
A second. And comments, discussion?
I'll speak in favor of the resolution. I want to thank Caitlin for drafting the resolution on our behalf. And I want to acknowledge that it is a resolution and it is just, expression is just words, but words matter, expressions matter. In fact, it's expressions and words that brought us, that's the topic to us now. But we are not stopping with words and I want to express to the public that we have plans for action to follow these words, that the words are important.
And as a board and as a district, we take these incidents very seriously. They cannot continue. We have to do something. And that's, this is step one. These are the words, the actions will absolutely follow.
And the more we put into words, the more that we can hold people in account in the future.
Absolutely.
It's the basis.
So any other comments before we move? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Okay. Comments from the public? Mr. Costas coming in.
Good evening. Peter Costas, trustee, Sonoma County Obstetrication and trustee Jen, congratulations. It's the first time I've got the chance to see you on the board. So just a couple of things. I just want to pass out just a little flyer about SCO for everybody to have. And I also want to commend the board by passing this resolution on hate crimes and opposing white supremacy. I think that is so important and so critical. I know it's going to be passed the resolution over the years, well, after the president got elected a couple of years ago on dealing with ICE and immigration and not allowing them on campus. I know you did too, but I really commend you for doing this. It's a powerful statement and you're right, it's got to come from the top. And then the more words you put out there, then you can hold people accountable. So I commend you. I also commend the board for Saturday, the community outreach at the Machesi, at the community center. I was there and I participated in the inclusion group in equity. And Elizabeth did an incredible job facilitating that group. There was a lot of powerful statements were made, people speaking from their heart. There was some strong emotions and I think there's a lot of good information. I saw note takers. So that was, that was very powerful. But again, the courage to, for the board to put that together and how important it is to hear from the community again. Boy, we heard from the community.
Yes, we did.
Just a couple of other things. One is some upcoming SCO workshops. And you might have seen this, I'm sure Gary's gotten this out to you, but on September 12th at 1:00, these are all free, by the way. The administrative kickoff opened all board members and superintendents and accounting. The speaker's going to be a gentleman named Dave Cullen, writes for the New York Times. He's written quite a few books. Recently, he's written books on Columbine, Parkland, and he's written quite a few articles on national news. So he's going to be the keynote speaker on that. And then on 26th, this is for school district teams to come in. This is a Safe Schools Conference. We had one a year ago, starts at 8:00 AM. It's an all-day thing. We're going to have the Sonoma County Sheriff, the district attorney is going to be there, some other people are going to be there, and they're going to be talking about school violence prevention policies. And not just policies, but strategies in dealing with the school violence. So that's open again to teams of, from schools, teachers, counselors, psychologists, trustees, superintendents, principals. That's on September 26th. And all this is free and you can register online at the SCO website. And in the spring, I don't have, we don't have dates because we haven't come out yet, but Carl from School Legal Services does workshops on, you know, Board Boot Camp, Brown Act, stuff like that. So that'll be out again in the spring. And then also in the spring, after the governor brings out his budget and legislation starts to kick in, we'll have another workshop on legislation that's up in, you know, impact education.
And that's in the spring?
That'll be in the spring, usually as February or March. And then the SHIP workshop. SHIP is the Summer High School Institute Program at Sonoma State University. There are 15 seniors who in their junior year got selected countywide to work with a professor at Sonoma State in the Science Department to do some research. And there's like over 50 that apply, I mean, 15 are chosen every year to work for a couple weeks with a professor. And this is going to be in September. I lost it. Anyway, it'll be in, a Wednesday, September, the second Wednesday of September. And at Sonoma State, they're going to show off what their research. And you have two students from Petaluma. From Casa Grande High School, you have a Hadley Mahoney. And what they worked on is Eclipse Mega Movie, Exploring the Dynamic Sun Using 2017 Total Solar Eclipse Photographs. And Paul, I'm going to blow this class name, Zereth Famosco?
Sounds great, Sam.
Sure. And his is a different radar equation. So you have two students out of 15 from Casa Grande. And you have another student from Pedaluma High School, Miko Brown. And the world's singing by an antenna. So they're gonna, they've done all this, and they're gonna be honored and presented, so SHIP is up. There's a collaboration with Sonoma State and SCO, we helped fund it. And think about it, you have three out of fifteen students countywide that were selected and participated. I think that's quite an honor. Yes, ma'am?
So what's the selection process? Does it go through the career centers, or is it something that, you know, the teacher?
They apply, the information goes out in the junior year, and they apply through Sonoma State.
But I mean, who does it go out to, the information?
Does it go to counselors?
Like the application to apply, does it go to science teachers?
They go to the schools, no, they go to the schools and they get distributed.
Individual schools?
Well, high schools, yes, all the high schools in the county. Yeah, all the high schools in the county. I'm sorry, I got what you're saying.
Sorry.
And it gets distributed, and, you know, there could be over fifty, sixty students that won't apply, only fifteen are selected. It's really fascinating, you know, the stuff they talk about. Way over my head. And then, I just want to point out, John Martin, he was a good friend of mine, and he's, him and his wife Liz support Journalist League and Mentor Me, specifically for providing counselor, counseling students in alternative programs. So just my hat's off to John. Much needed counseling. And finally, this Sunday in the Press Democrat, there's gonna be an insert on Portrait of a Graduate in Sonoma County, something that was worked out countywide last spring, getting a lot of input from school districts and nonprofits to come up with, you know, what is a portrait of a graduate in Sonoma County look like? And they came up with curiosity, empathy, communication, collaboration, ethics, and taking the initiative. So there's gonna be a rollout of that. Like I said, there'll be a flyer in the Press Democrat. And what was interesting about the process, and I shared this the other day, was when we went to Philadelphia last spring for National School Boards Association Conference, there was a whole workshop breakout session on Portrait of Graduate, school districts doing it, hiring consultants to come in and put together a portrait. But it was like from individual school districts. So this school district had their portrait of graduate, this school district had their portrait of graduate. But shouldn't they be alive? They're going out to the world, they get jobs. So what was nice about Sonoma County was a countywide effort. So this is what employers, schools, and parents, they want to see in their students. So that'll be this Sunday. Thank you.
I want to thank you for being everywhere. Really, really. I didn't even know that there was, you know, a Board of Supervisors, or a Board of Education through SCO.
Oh, County Board of Education?
I didn't really realize that we like voted on it all the time, and so I
Yeah, you voted for me, maybe.
No, 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 I always knew why I was voting for you. But, you know, so I really appreciate, I mean, you are really everywhere.
And we hear expulsion appeal hearings and inter-district candidate appeal hearings.
Oh, I know, but I mean, you go to the community meetings.
No, yeah, that was one of our goals as a board, is to reach out to the community.
Yeah, sounds nice.
Well, you're doing it.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, report on activities and correspondence of school board members. We went, there was back-to-school night at Cherry Valley and Kangaro, because they started earlier than everybody else. The Gaucho Go-Getter Scholarship Fundraiser, which would have been very fun. The Pedaluma Healthcare District.
Ochippa.
Ochippa Work Group on Mental Health and Substance Abuse. The All Staff Professional Development Day, and then of course, we all participated in the community forum. Okay. Approval of Consent Agenda by Consolidated Motion. I need a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Noise.
Second.
Okay, are there any comments about this?
I just wanted to ask a question about one of the items, particularly 9.4.1, Liz. This is the Keeping Kids in School and WestEd MOU. I'm not familiar with the program, but it just, maybe you could just describe the interventions that are happening at the Pedaluma City Schools that are part of the study in particular, if there's any link between those interventions and the topic that we talked earlier with white supremacy and school climate.
So what happens with Keeping Kids in School is their focus is on looking at chronic absenteeism throughout the district. Generally, there's a seven percent overall chronic absenteeism rate here in Pedaluma City Schools, which is the lowest in the county, and the state averages twelve percent. So our schools are generally doing pretty well, which means, you know, a lot of times we like to connect attendance by saying, "Students feel safe, they'll come to school." Not to negate, you know, what's been brought to our attention about students aren't necessarily feeling safe. Obviously, that's work we still need to do. And what Keeping Kids in School does is it takes students who are chronically absent, and they reach out and have one-on-one caseloads and one-on-one, I would say, interventions with students depending on their particular situation. So for example, if a student weren't feeling safe, maybe, maybe for one of these reasons, you know, that's on this page, our Keeping Kids in School mentor, who works with Seneca, her name is Chelsea. She will connect with students and see what are the things that we can do, and that she can do, and that our community can do to get this student to start coming to school. And so it's a lot of individual case by case. She works with fifteen students, she currently has seven students on her caseload. And last year, the way that the placement worked was we would have our school attendance review board, which was students who had the most chronic absences, and ended up, you know, in front of the board, with the DA, with probation, with our district representative at the time, Dave Rose, this year it would be me. And oftentimes, those students were referred to Keeping Kids in School. Since that time, I've met with Chelsea, and what she did was pull down data and found our schools with the highest chronic absenteeism rate. So we have two schools that are above the seven percent. And with those two schools, you know, for better or for worse, there are elementary schools, and they're trying to pull in more elementary students so that we can be more proactive rather than reacting. So this year, Chelsea's actually gonna reach out to those elementary schools and work one-on-one with those families.
Does she also work with parents?
She also works with parents, yes, she works with the families, so it's work with the students and
Especially in elementary school, it's not
Exactly.
Six-year-old.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing a lot of case advocacy, but is there, is there any part of intervention that is more, more about school climate holistically?
That is a great question. So, yes and no. Right now, this is done across the county, and this is where WestEd comes in. They are using Pedaluma City Schools as the control group comparing to what other school districts are doing. So, right now, our systems have been one-on-one meetings with students. That in, in Robert Park Khatati, they're actually systematizing so that there's more education around absenteeism or issues that might be leading to absenteeism, where they can educate staff. They, WestEd is this year working to compare, is this better done programmatically through education of staffs? Or is this more effective when you're working one-on-one with kids and families? And so, and that's where the WestEd comes in. The lucky thing is, one, this MOU is of no cost to the district. And two, because Pedaluma has signed up as a control group, we get two more years of work with Keeping Kids in School to continue the study and see. At the same time, I asked Chelsea, well, can we kind of systematize something? And the answer is yes, you know, I don't know if WestEd is gonna like, you know, how fuzzy that may make their numbers, but yes. That she's, you know, taking learnings from Robert Park Khatati and implementing some of the things here. So I'll be, I meet with her weekly, and we'll see where this goes.
And this costs us nothing?
This costs us nothing.
And they are kind of, this is the first year?
No, this is the third.
Third year?
Third year.
That's great. Thank you, Zoe. That was very educational. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Well then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Cool. Action items. We already did. Okay, Resolution 1920-02, the Board of Education of the Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School District declaring September as attendance awareness month. What does that mean?
It means that the resolution itself, that there is a direct link between student attendance and achievement. That's irrefutable, whether you look at national or localized data. It means that we're still gonna make it a priority that we are an inverted district. We are, we are the, not the norm. The good news is our high school, our junior highs do pretty darn good with their attendance. They are above the norm. Unfortunately, our elementary is below the norm. Typically, you see elementary attendance rates that are higher than high school or junior high. It's not that way, it's a flipped situation. So while we don't have the chronic re-truancy letters, sending to DA issues, we've got a lot of vacation-related during the school year trips. I'll just leave it at that. And that's from student, from working with students, and they, believe me, I've been in every classroom, and they tell me, you know, about the trips they're gonna take. So it's, it's, we're trying to work with folks to educate them about when's the best time to do that. And making, continuing, keeping them attendance awareness on the forefront.
And I sort of jumped the gun, I should have moved it in before I asked.
Sorry.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 1920-03, the Board of Education of the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District, County of Sonoma, State of California, authorizing to participate on the Volkswagen Environmental Mitigation Trust.
Can you speak a little bit to it? Or should I move first?
Let's play Robert Jules.
Yeah, I move to approve.
I second.
Okay. Chris, explain.
Well, we, we have a very aging fleet of school buses. And we are exploring every avenue to try to, excuse me, apply for grant funds to start replacing them. And in particular, replacing them with greener energy, whether that's electric or whether that is a cleaner fuel type of school bus. So this is the third that we're looking at, we haven't heard from the other two. This is a settlement with Volkswagen, so you'll recall Volkswagen had some issues with software that was basically bypassing, I don't know. And so as a settlement, they had to put X number of million dollars into this trust, and then various agencies related to how to save emissions, which is kind of a counterpoint to their their grievance, grievance, yeah. And schools are allowed, our schools are one of the agencies, not just schools, it could be transit buses, it could be, you know, other types. So the first part of applying for that is having the board basically adopt this resolution, and that's why we're bringing it to you tonight. And it's for specifically electric buses.
So they, we would apply for it, and they would buy those buses for us?
They would give us the money?
They would give us the money?
Yes, and we're hoping to replace as many as possible.
Full cost of the buses.
Full cost of the bus.
And the training, did it have something to do with training?
Well, what happens is we have two highly qualified maintenance mechanics who do an amazing job. They not only work on our yellow fleet, they work on our white fleet, our maintenance vehicles. They also work on the red fleet for the city, which is basically fire trucks and ambulances. So they are, and they go to specialized trainings, but the red fleet is paid for by the city, so it's been a great partnership. So part of this grant application would be that they would provide training specifically on how to maintain electric buses, that there's some differences and so on and so forth. And then it would also provide some money, we're not sure how much, on infrastructure upgrades. In other words, we'd probably have to improve or upgrade the electrical capacity for that facility because all of a sudden you're plugging in school buses, and it's gonna take a lot more juice.
Do we know if the city is applying, or if they're able to apply?
You know, I have not reached out to the city to ask them that question. I'm sure that they are.
I mean, pardon me, I don't want them to hint, but they could be a partner with
They did a great outreach job with letting everybody know, all the municipalities.
But yeah, could we, because I know that's one of the, at least one council member's mission is to get the city fleet greener as well, so.
Well, for us, it's two parts, really, our aging, our aging fleet, and we operate about twenty-six bus routes.
Well, and I think that gives us a better leverage, is ours are probably making more emissions than, because they have pretty new stuff, so.
Well, it's not only that, but there's also potentially PG&E rebates, PG&E grants to help with the infrastructure. And the state's, the cost of fuel is significantly impacting us because it's upwards of, it's getting closer to four dollars per gallon.
Is our current fleet diesel, or what is it?
Mostly diesel, yes.
What are specifically the ones that you propose to replace? Are those diesel?
Hopefully all of them. Not necessarily, because actually, fuel, diesel potentially runs cleaner than fuel. So, I mean, we're looking at the oldest part of the fleet. Where are, where are the buses that need the greatest? And then we'll look at the grant guidelines and also find out which buses qualify the most to give us the best opportunity to get that grant. And one of the ones that we applied for, we actually wanted ten school buses to be replaced, so.
Now, how many, we have, we have an electric car, and we get, when we first got it, we got a hundred miles. Now it's down to about eighty, and if it's cold, it's less. So that's my concern, is what's the mileage there? I mean, can you do a full bus route without having to worry about it?
That's a great question, but you know, Pedaluma's not that large, so we're not taking those long trips. And remember, we do a morning routes, and then we come back, and we can refuel, so we can re-plug back in.
What about field trips?
And then we do afternoon routes. Well, we, we're not gonna replace all of them, so if there was a route that's gonna be further, then we would use a diesel bus route.
All right, thank you.
And it says that these ones have one twenty miles on full charge.
One hundred and twenty?
The other thing is, to keep in mind, right now, because we have older school buses, they don't have seatbelts.
Right.
And so they actually fit more students. Once we start upgrading, the capacity of the same-sized school bus actually goes down. So, you know, it, it, it's not the special addresses of our larger buses.
The bleachers, did you say?
It's like changing bleachers, when you, when you change out your bleachers, you go to the new requirements.
Because the codes are different as far as AD accessibility and how much footprint, a lower number of bleachers are going to be suitable actually.
So the same number takes far more room, other than the codes.
I have a question.
I was thinking that the hundred and twenty is of course from Volkswagen.
Yeah, exactly.
So are there any other questions?
We don't have to buy their buses, though.
No, we just
Oh, it's not Volkswagen buses?
No, no, we're not gonna buy, we're not gonna be able to buy our buses.
No, it's money, not, they have to drive.
They are coming out with an all-electric.
Yes, but not a school bus.
I don't really want to talk about that.
That's a good question.
I'm not
That's a pretty good show, get fined, and they can also decide.
Get fined and make money off the fines.
Maybe it would help with him.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go for it, Chris. Okay, last action item, Resolution 1920-04, the Board of Education, the Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School District of the County of Sonoma, State of California, authorizing signatory for budget transfers of funds.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, questions?
This is really a formality, in order for us to just do the day-to-day work that we do, which gives us the authority to transfer funds between banks.
You really need that.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, future business.
So obviously, we're gonna be compiling a ton of material that we gathered for the, from the recent forum. I would, I would like us to consider, so we can get going, because it's, to try to, to do all different areas, it's a little bit too much. But I think we could get a head start on the fiscal, the revenue piece. If we had one or two board members that were willing to work with us, we could kind of get going with that.
And not by Sheldon.
Yeah. At least not many.
I'm voluntary.
The idea would be that we would, we would, we would explore scenarios, and then we would come back. And, you know, obviously, this all would take place in an open session.
Do you want two of us?
We would, a two would be great.
I'll do it.
Can't have more than that, but. And come back with some scenarios, maybe bring a consultant or two, and make some decisions about how we might want to move forward. So we can get going on that while, while, maybe we have a chance to meet with, with the facilitators, those they kind of gather their information.
Yeah, I think that's a good one.
We can get going on this one, and that'll get us, get us moving down the way of a punch list, I guess. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Any other?
Yeah, I want to talk about the dress code, the dress codes. And letting girls wear spaghetti straps because it's freaking twenty nineteen.
Okay.
So I'll talk about that next time. And I want to talk about what the heck is going on with our recycling program, if we have anything overlapping all the schools, because I happen to work for a nonprofit that can work with us. Probably, I can't say for free, but they can do education for free and do other things and-
What's been up with you?
Conservation Corps of North Bay. It's what works in you.
So a discussion item on dress code and a discussion item on recycling program.
But I'd like an answer from staff about what existing infrastructure is currently with our trash and recycling.
Infrastructure, so some type of information, discussion on that.
Yeah, like what, if there is anything, because it sounds like it differs from campus to campus.
Do you guys do, do you guys do trash audits?
I'll have to check on support max.
So my past life, what I've seen is that most schools start out with a trash audit, which they work with the kids and they actually audit their garbage.
Oh, yes.
And they actually see what are being thrown away. So it's really grassroots coming from the kids, because let's face it, our greatest generator of trash are the students.
Yes, oh, totally.
So, so a trash audit might be, if we can find a vendor that will come in and work with our schools to do a trash audit, might be a good next step.
If I had a vendor in mind, could I, should I tell them to connect with you?
And then as far as dress code goes, do you need?
I want to take an action.
I understand that, but I don't even know what the dress code is at this point.
So we'll bring that, we'll bring that forward. So, so let me just double, so Chris, am I working with you on the, on the recycling piece? And Liz, I'll work with you on the, on the dress code piece.
Gotcha.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Maddie, me.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I want to schedule our office hours and try to get this on our, sorry, we meant to do that.
I know, it was-
Yeah, so we want to start as soon as possible, so.
How about if we send out a Google Doc to you guys with just generic days of the week, times, and you can start plugging that in and everybody else can see what, try to find the commonality.
And then, and that would have the different sites?
Well, starting just with times. Because once you have the times, the site will be easier to get.
So we want to do, for the audience, we want to do office hours at the various school sites throughout the city. And-
There would be two of us.
There would be two of us. Would most likely be in the morning, but it could be in the afternoon. We're not really quite sure that's why this is happening. And, and we'll be there for about an hour and there's no agenda, you just come and, and talk, you know, and you can-
Ask questions.
Ask questions, you can- Yeah.
We've been talking about this for six, seven months.
We had it, we had it like our second month. And along those lines, the, the ad hoc groups that you were talking about with all the other, you know, the scheduled votes, try to get whoever's going to work on it. And there's been a lot going on. I am kind of like a, have become a member of this OCHIPA work group through the Petaluma Healthcare District. And OCHIPA is a community health initiative of the Petaluma area. And so this particular work group is around mental health and substance abuse. And so they are, there's a movie, a documentary called Resilience. And it's the biology of stress and the science of hope. And so they have, St. Joseph's, is that what it is, Liz?
Yes, St. Joseph's.
They have kind of got possession of this documentary. And so they're going to be presenting it in Petaluma October sixteenth and seventeenth. And Liz is working on this also, to put together a group.
So the sixteenth and the seventeenth, they are bringing in a small group to do a Train the Trainer panel to show the film in many other venues throughout the county. So then we're reaching out to our schools, once we have those trainers trained to have, to be with staffs and do panels with the staff.
It might be really good to partner with Metro Me to do them.
Yes.
Are we going to screen the movie?
We want, what, that was one thing, was to definitely have a school board who's to screen the movie and see it, you know, first.
I saw that Hannah Boyd's in it.
Oh, you saw that? Good, I really want to.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be very cool.
Cool.
Yeah. There you go.
Anything else before I move?
Well, that's just, look for that after office.
Okay, all right. Signing of papers, student number one did commit an expellable act and will be attending Headwaters for the school and has been recommended to attend Headwaters for the school year two thousand nineteen twenty. Do we vote on that?
Yeah, I'm going to make them up.
We move to expel?
I'm willing to expel. Student number one.
Second. Oh, a second, I thought I moved. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we are adjourned to close session.